All right, we'll reconvene our meeting. And we're on Report on Deferred Maintenance Inventory of Learning Space Needs. And Laura Lee and Chris are going to make this presentation.
Okay, you've seen chunk one and chunk two. And I'm just going to briefly talk about deferred maintenance slash energy management. Because as you may recall, you had a special meeting on deferred maintenance and a very complete report from Mr. Houghton on that last fall in which he went over in great detail what all that involved and what the needs were. It's kind of the nuts and bolts, the guts of the building. It's heating and cooling, it's carpeting, it's ceilings, it's asphalt, parking lots, tracks, roofs, and so forth. But that's definitely one of the needs of existing schools. And so that's one of the pieces that we wanted to remind you of tonight. And within the dollars which we'll show you when we've finished the next piece, Mr. Houghton has included what would be needed to satisfy Mr. Parker's and the board's request at the last meeting to include what would be needed to bring the buildings up to the appropriate level for energy management. And now we'll talk about the inventory of learning space needs. This was really a team effort between Mr. Growlup and Dr. Banikowski and the Teaching and Learning Department. So he's going to walk through that with you.
As Laura Lee said, as part of the bond process, what we did is we conducted an inventory of all the programs and the spaces of all of our elementary schools. We met with building principals, we met with representatives from ELL, special ed, Title I. And from that inventory, we confirmed things and found out some new information. As Greg talked about in his presentation, our schools do have a lot more programs in it than just K through six education. Every school has these special ed programs in it. OTPT, a psychologist, Quest, which is for the gifted, resource rooms, social workers, and speech and language. These schools can have multiple rooms of this. As we talked about, that Ridgeview had three, has three speech teachers. A lot of schools have two resource rooms. And so depending upon the needs of the community dictate how many, how much space each of these programs requires. But every school has these programs in it. In addition to that, we have other special ed programs such as deaf heart of hearing, early childhood, emotional disturbance, interpreters, life skills and music therapy. All of these programs are center-based programs that are put in an area and depending upon the needs of the community, one school or multiple schools will feed to a program there. And so these are also at all of our schools. And pretty much on average, all of our schools, almost all of our schools have one of these programs. Some have two, and a few have three. Three full-size classrooms devoted to these programs. Also, as we've talked about, there are the specials, what people commonly refer to as specials, the vocal music, the band, the strings, art, library, computer lab, and counselor. These also are spaces that are at all of our buildings. And then, as Mr. Thomason did, talked about in our presentations, they're starting with prototype A and then going to prototype B and C and D. Now, we've had some spaces, wet areas in prototype A, the larger activity areas in prototypes B, C, and D. Those spaces, for the most part, are, due to the growth, have kind of been viewed as classrooms waiting to happen. Those spaces were built with a purpose. And as a school got full, that purpose, we put a classroom there and that space lost the ability to serve that purpose for that. The activity areas obviously are large enough spaces that you can bring multiple classes together to have presentations at the school. And so some of those spaces, and that was one of the things we heard at Regency Place, was the need for having large spaces that you can bring multiple grades, multiple classes together. And so at a lot of our schools, they've lost those spaces. And so the restoring of those activity areas slash wet areas. Other learning needs at a school is the ELL program. As we talked about at the, I have to get my meetings right here, at the last regular board meeting in October, we talked about how the ELL population has gone from, grew by over 400 students from last year to this year. Tremendous growth with no new ELL sites added. The needs for larger schools. Dr. Banikowski's been doing some research about as schools get over 600 students in population, the need for things that smaller schools don't have, as we talked about earlier in conversations, more vocal music, larger libraries, second computer labs, things like that. Again, things that just take up space, take up space. And more than likely, at our elementary schools, take away a classroom. A computer lab has to go into a classroom-sized space. Title I services. We've had reading, math, and then also over the past, since 1994, we started with all-day kindergarten at just two schools, Central and Fairview. But by last year, we had title, we had all-day kindergarten at every one of our elementary schools. And so that also was an expansion of space, or expansion of programs that resulted in a need for space. And then, of course, as we talked about at our last special board meeting in October, the second meeting in October, just the enrollment growth the district's had experienced and will continue to experience. Based on these programs and our conversation with the principals, what we looked at was not just the programs that were at a school, but as Mr. Parker identified earlier, the spaces that those programs were in. We've got a lot of programs that, as Dr. Wilhelm talked about in touring Ridgeview, pretty much every one of our buildings you can walk through when she said that Ridgeview is maximizing all of their space. I mean, you can say that about almost every one of our buildings. We've got, at Indian Creek, due to enrollment growth, they've got their band room, their band and strings room is in the gym storage area. It's a nice gym area now, but it's still the storage area for, there's basketballs and stuff like that for gym stacked around where they practice band. And so our schools have done, have done an amazing job of making sure that our class sizes stay low, but that has come at a cost. And that's the cost of putting these programs that we've talked about into really small or compromised spaces, as Mr. Gilmore referred to them. And so as we did this survey, we looked at what the building is like right now, what programs they have, what spaces they are, and using the standard that we used for designing Madison Place. We started looking at Madison Place and said, okay, a classroom is a building block for the school. And started saying, okay, some programs only really need a half-classroom-type space. Other programs need a quarter of a classroom, which would be a nice-sized office space. And so we came up with standards for all these different programs that the district offers. We then went back through, met with all the building principals and the people that we talked about with our survey, and said, this is the programs we think you have. What programs do you actually have? Made corrections there, and then said, what kind of spaces are those programs in? And so based on that, we kind of grouped their needs into different categories. There was growth. We talked about growth at the last meeting there. You heard four schools that there were planned, that at the last special board meeting, four schools, there were projects listed for additions at four schools, Manchester Park, Countryside, Brougham, and Indian Creek. We've kind of put that number into this total as well. We've looked at equity. We've looked at buildings that have, like at Ridgeview, three ELL instructors in one classroom, and the need for more space to break those out into more space. And that's kind of part of equity. We also looked at the activity areas, wet areas, and looked at the classrooms and the OTPTs and the Quest and stuff like that that have become permanently housed in our wet areas and activity areas. And said, okay, how much space do we need to restore those uses? And based on that, I'm sure you're all anxious to see this there, we came up with, if the sixth grade was to stay at the elementary school level, that we need 131 additional space, classroom-sized spaces. A cost of that from Mr. Thomason is $57 to $73 million. If the sixth grade was to move, and this kind of gets at the delta that Mr. Churchman referred to at the last special board meeting, kind of the facilities impact at the elementary school level of moving the sixth grader, of moving the sixth grader to the middle school, that number of spaces drops to 66 additional spaces at a cost of between $28 and $36 million.
Mr. Growlup, can we see that detail by school, please?
We can get you that, absolutely. I mean, we've got a survey for that. And basically, just to kind of give you a summary of it by school, real quickly, and we'll get you the full detail there, that to address equity needs at our schools, we came up with that 25 schools, 25 of our 31 elementary schools need additional space. That doesn't count for, the four schools that we talked about that we had planned to receive additions. It also includes schools that will receive enrollment help from Madison Place and from Woodland and to future elementary school sites. So once you account for those planned growth projects, that number drops down to 14. That 14 schools would have a need for equity space. When you look at the needs of equity and growth-
Chris, could you restate that, what you just said?
That when you factor out, there are 25 schools that need additional space.
Right now?
Right now. Well, right now, or planned for during the course of the bond issue, during the next five years. The planning period that we looked at was a five-year cycle, the period for the expected bond issue, or the period bond project list would cover. And so in that, we had 25 schools that would need, either do need or will need additional space. Out of those 25 schools, 11 of them will be helped by planned construction projects. The construction of Madison Place will help Scarborough, Sunnyside, Arbor Creek. The construction of Woodland Elementary would help. Our plan right now is to have it help Washington Elementary and Meadow Lane Elementary, for sure, maybe some other schools. But those two schools were counted for sure that it would help. We also had additions at four schools, as we talked about, the Manchester Park, Countryside, and that. So in total, the planned new construction projects for growth would help 11 of those schools, reducing that total to 14. Is that clear? But as we talked about, the 131 spaces, the solution for those 131 spaces, we're not talking about a need, the addition, it's going to be a combination of different solutions that are going to achieve this, to achieve the necessary space. One solution that the Bond Task Force recommended, obviously, was moving some people out of these schools, moving the sixth grader out of the schools. But additions, obviously, we can't, obviously, there's going to be a need to create more space to achieve the equity. I guess that's the, kind of the big picture, that's kind of the big idea with this, is that to achieve the equity, we're going to need either a lot of people to leave our elementary schools, or we're going to need the creation of more space. Then Laura Lee's going to kind of summarize the four chunks there, or do we have time for it?
Were there any more questions for Mr. Growlup? Okay, we're going to just walk through the-
Hang on just a second, Laura Lee.
I guess I don't want us to leave maybe that statement open-ended and not understand that always, I think our district, and I hope I'm speaking for the staff and the board too, that our first consideration will always be the academic, educational, social, emotional needs of kids when we're talking about, again, the sixth and ninth grade movement. And that the space issues are certainly a consideration. But my understanding is that our first consideration in the thoughts of movement of these students has to do with meeting the academic challenges for these students. Is that correct?
That's correct. But I want to stress, I mean, there are many, many other side benefits to, or secondary benefits to the primary benefit of academic advancement for our sixth and ninth graders. One of them that we're pointing out tonight is facilities. There is going to be, and as everybody's aware of, we talked about it at the last growth meeting, there is going to be a large impact on facilities, that the need for the difference between, or the impact of that need, we're trying to present now on the elementary schools. As Mr. Thomason talked about, the impact in the high schools will be discussed at the next month's special meeting, when we do talk about that actual sixth and ninth move.
And I think, not questioning that at all, I know that has to be a factor and a piece in consideration. I just don't want it to be the perception of the community that that's the major consideration forgiven, and that they're not the considerations on academic, social, and emotional needs of these students as these decisions are being made.
I have another question. Chris, if you could help me, how do I draw a line from the overhead slide that you're showing here back to the listing from the Bond Task Force? Or is that, am I mixing apples and oranges here?
This is kind of- What we did is kind of expand upon the work of the Bond Task Force. The Bond Task Force went through and looked at schools, looked at the need for space for some of those, for those schools. But what it really didn't get into is the issue that Mr. Parker and some others, board members, had brought up earlier today, is the equity of those spaces. It didn't get into, it kind of looked at Central and said, yeah, it needs ELL program at Central. There are two spaces designated for ELL. They have two staff, full-time staff people at Central for ELL. Great, move on to the next school. What we then looked at was, again, trying to change the dynamic of thinking from just what are the programs at the school, but what are the programs and what are the spaces at the school? And so I guess I'd say, build upon it, took a step further and say, yes, they do have two ELL instructors, and they do have two spaces designated for it, but those two spaces are offices. They're not a space that would be appropriate for an ELL instructor. And so there's a need for more space at Central for this ELL instructor.
So then, is it safe to say that based on your analysis, your dollar figures are bigger than the dollar figure we've seen so far for all these different needs?
Yes. This is, I mean, this, I want to interrupt. The stuff that we're presenting to you tonight, and that you'll be getting the more detailed version of later, is new information, it's additional information, but it definitely builds upon and has a starting block with the information that you got in the notebook from the Bond Task Force, absolutely.
I just want to make sure that's clear to everybody who's listening to this. We're kind of going the next step beyond even the Bond Task Force findings-
Correct.
-quantifying even more, in more detail than-
I mean, taking, because I mean, what they did, and it was a great benefit to the district, was starting to define that equity piece. And, you know, taking what their definition of equity was and trying to apply that to all of our buildings.
Dr., all my concern is we're chasing a moving target here. I'm surprised to hear this.
Perhaps I can try to respond to that, and maybe Chris and Laura Lee can as well. Let me get this up here. One of the things that we talked about here, and we had this conversation, I think, as recently as in the last week and a half, is that the classroom space for growth, I think, is very clear, and that's been identified. I think the issue that staff did in terms of an inventory, a full inventory, remember, this is an inventory based on, you know, how many people are in which activity area or which of the three people in a classroom. All of those were done very thoroughly by staff. It may be very important in this prioritization that we're going to have to, and we had this discussion, we didn't, I think Greg said this, we didn't get to this place overnight, and we're not going to solve all of this overnight, or probably in one bond package. I think what staff's trying to do is not have a moving target, but what staff's trying to do is to say, okay, we're investing some time to lay everything out of what it actually looks like inside these buildings that you drive by every day, and how they're truly being used, and come back and take a look at that. I think the hard part for staff right now is, how far do we go down this road, and where do we draw the line? And that was also the case we have for redoing some of our facilities. It's the range you had in price for Central or Ridgeview. You know, where's, where do we stop? You know, what do we for sure do? Can we chip away at some of this over the next decade? You know, in terms of having some really good data here about what the needs are. I think going back school by school, you know, we may say, here are some things that really have to happen, here are some things we're going to have to live with. And that's where some of the decision's going to come. I think as staff, we have a responsibility to you not to lay out everything and then not give you some prioritized options. And I will assure you, we will do that so that you're not seeing a large number, and then we're saying to you, now tell us what to do. We're going to give you some options, and then you can guide us at that point as we come back. Because we have to have an affordability piece here. But to some extent, we have to tackle some of these tough issues and prioritize them. So I don't know if I'm answering your question, but I know that staff time, where the Bond Task Force ended, I've had them out taking a look at buildings, and I think we've looked at a few things with a different lens than maybe we did before. And even some of our staff members and principals did that with the Bond Task Force. They didn't report some things, simply because that's just the way it's always been since they were the principal of the building. You know, the wet areas weren't, were always used as classrooms. And it was never a question, should we have activity areas like some of the other schools have activity areas or not? And we may not ever be able to do that. I don't know. We're just laying out the whole thing.
Chris, I want to stand the slide. That's what's needed now, but we've just said that we'll-
Or within the five-year planning period.
Within the five-year planning period. But that doesn't include the impact of the two new schools?
No, it does. Like I said, it doesn't. It did impact, I mean-
You just said it would reduce it from 25 schools to 14 that would need it, so should these numbers be ratios down?
No, these numbers are reduced. I was just giving you general numbers of, just to try to give you an idea of the impact across the schools. That, I mean, this isn't three or four schools that need space, this is almost every elementary school that needs space. But these numbers, the 131 spaces, do subtract out the Sunnyside, the Arbor Creek, the Scarborough, all these schools that are going to get help from planned addition, from planned projects. It does subtract out their need.
Okay. I wasn't sure I heard that correctly.
But yes, it does. This is needs that, to be honest, if you'd say, how are we going to do this? This, all 131 spaces are all stuff that there is no building plan for.
I just, in applauding the staff for the fact that we really are looking at what we call learning spaces and identifying specific. We talk about these programs, and then what we have sometimes traditionally tried to do is say, oh, we've needed to create a new program, and now we'll go find a space for it. But now what we've identified is, these are programs that are really, our students have needs for. Now let's do some planning and some future planning for it. So I think definitely that needs to be recognized, that we're looking at the academic needs first and not saying we have X amount of space, and so that's what we work with, and that's what we deal with.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment about the data. The Bond Task Force did a lot of work and surfaced a lot of needs, but the Planning Department, the Teaching and Learning Department, wanted to make sure that we provided the most accurate data possible to the board for you to make really important decisions on. And so they sat down and went through and analyzed very thoroughly based on much more extensive knowledge and conversations and calculations than the Bond Task Force, you know, would have had the time or the knowledge to do. And even forecasting some things that the Bond Task Force hadn't thought about, which was, what are going to be the additional needs in our special programs? We had looked at enrollment growth, but we hadn't really talked about what are going to be the additional needs in special programs that need their own special spaces. And that impacts the bottom line. So that's kind of how that got started. Okay, are there any more questions for Chris? We actually have five chunks tonight, because I didn't mention that at the end of our presentation, which is almost over now, we're just going to show you the dollars associated with each of these pieces. Gary Deener is going to talk about financial implications. So our comprehensive plan for older schools, in the executive summary of the Bond Task Force, that was identified at $45 million if all the schools that the Bond Task Force identified were tackled at once. Mr. Thomason talked to you about, you know, starting with perhaps four of the most needy schools. And as he mentioned, the innovative plan for Central and Ridgeview would be between $6 and $10 million. That was $3 to $5 million per school. The deferred maintenance, energy management, also, these pieces are included in the Bond Task Force executive summary. The reason there's a range there is because it depends on what you might want to include and how you might define certain pieces. But that's basically the range that Mr. Houghton talked to you about last fall, and the inventory of learning space needs, which was what Chris just gave you. And the total identified needs for existing schools could range between a low of $80 million to $135 million. And now I'll turn this over to Mr. Deener.
Is there a chance that we can have a copy of this PowerPoint at some point, please?
We're going to put everything on-
We will put everything on board docs, and that'll be available for press and others.
We're going to talk about some financial implications, and I know we're going to see what is an example of what a numerical number of a bond issue might look like, but I don't want anybody to interpret this as this is what we're going to do or what our intentions are, because we're not even close to discussing that yet. But we thought it would be good just to begin to see what the financial impact is on a certain size of bond issue and how might, one way it might be done. And that's what Mr. Deener's going to talk about. So keep that in mind as you see this information.
As we see this information. I really thought I knew how to do this. Peter?
As Mr. Deener continues to justify the need for technology dollars-
It's amazing how things always look different up here when you're getting ready to present yourself. I apologize for that. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore, for that comment, because it's very important. But I'd like to lead off with a question that Mrs. Wilhelm asked earlier, in which she was asking, what's leading this discussion? And I think you were trying to say that the academics side of this whole picture should be leading it. And I think that that's the perspective that, for those of us working in the financial area, we've been trying to keep in mind that as the Bond Task Force looked at the growth issues and the equity issues and the deferred maintenance, and now our staff are looking at the equity issues at even a deeper level, dealing with right down to the buildings and how things have changed. We all know that, I guess, the finances is sort of the pink elephant in the room. It has to be dealt with at some time, but it shouldn't be the deriving decision, not until we know exactly what needs to compose this bond package and what we really are trying to achieve. But it has to be addressed. And this evening, we're trying to take one step further in bringing that information to you, understanding all along that we're trying to not lead this discussion, we're trying to follow it. And as we follow it, you have to understand that we don't always have all the information that we're going to, in the end, need, but yet we have to use some information or else we can't provide you even a sample. And so like Mr. Gilmore said, we just need to keep that in perspective. Couple of things that we want you to leave with this evening, as we're talking about the financial implications. And that is, number one, that the bond and interest levy is something that, however far out this bond election goes, the board at that time, each year, will be in control of what that levy's going to look at. So we don't have to worry about that from that perspective. You will be in control, or future boards will be in control, each year at what that levy is going to be. In addition, there are financial factors that are going to be impacting the board's decision. And when we look at that, the first one is the size of the bond compared to the current tax base. When we talk about the bond, and I don't want to get going on cash balances this evening, but remember when we had those discussions, we tried to stay away sometimes from dollar amounts. Because a dollar amount of cash balance to Spring Hill and to Alatha, and to the school district of Chicago are entirely different numbers. The same number means entirely different things. And so we talked in terms of percentages. And I think we need to keep that in mind as we're talking about the breadth of the bond and the dollars that are represented now in today's world. Just for comparison purposes, back in 1996, '97, the board at that time was de- Just for comparison purposes, back in 1996, 97, the board at that time was dealing with the largest bond issue they had ever dealt with. And ultimately, it ended up with $124 million bond issue. That was based on a tax base of 600 and, a little over 600 million. Next year, our projected tax base is going to be over 1.8 billion, almost three times the tax base. So it's difficult for us to talk about the size in numbers of a bond from history if you don't also talk about the tax base that's going to be there to support it. We need to keep things in perspective. Current debt's very important. And we're going to have a slide there and I think we've looked at that before, but how new debt builds on current debt is something that's extremely important that we work with. As we talk about the definition of affordability, we're trying to present, and we've tried to pull information together and Marty Neuwij and Tom Calico are with us this evening. They are our financial advisors from Springstead and they're going to talk about a sample. And they built this sample on values that try to put it in a frame of affordability, understanding that everyone's concept of affordability is going to be different. And that's something that this board will have to deal with in deciding what does affordability mean. So as we move forward, we hope that the board leaves with those two critical concepts this evening. First of all, bond and interest historical levels. I think it's important for us to see that over the last, since 1993, the bond and interest has fluctuated tremendously from year to year, whether it's going down or increasing. If you put the bond elections in these areas, we can see that during a timeframe of 97, when we had the largest bond issue prior to this, the bond and interest levy actually was going down due to many different factors, as far as the growth of the district and other factors. On the other hand, when Northwest and Perry Trail and two other elementaries came online in '04, '05, we saw that there was sort of a balancing act that had to, a correction that had to take place. And so remembering this, the fluctuations in this graph and how variable we have the bond and interest levy, but also understanding that that is only one of six levy funds. And when we put all the funds together, we see that what the board has done historically, outside of the fluctuation that the levy was going down, which is arguably a good thing, the levies, the whole, the total district levy has been very, very stable. And what that says to us is that the board each year has the opportunity of working with the bond and interest levy, whatever that might be, and folding that in with the other five levies to make a levy that can be relatively stable over time, as long as you're looking forward and planning for the future. And so that is an opportunity that is available for us. As we look at current bond issues, and once again, I'd like to give some thanks and praise to past boards because what they have done is our current levy is right around 17, and we see that there's a continuing decline. We're not seeing any all of a sudden spikes in the current debt that might cause this board, our future boards, problems in capacity. But what we see is that, starting about the year 2000, I mean, 20,000, 2013, 2013, we see a tremendous drop-off, which provides for a capacity of additional growth in the future. Past boards have planned for the growth and for the allowance that future boards, which now is a future board from the past, okay, can have at least some opportunities of discussing a bond election, a bond package that's going to meet the current needs. And so with that, at this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Marty and Tom. I would like to say that Randy has contributed tremendously with all this information and I appreciate his offer. We sort of flipped a coin on who was going to give this introduction and I'll leave it to your own decision and who won or lost that bet. But I want to thank Randy for his work and his working with Marty on developing these scenarios that we've worked with and coming to a sample that we're going to look at this evening. So Marty?
Thanks. As Gary mentioned, we've been working with the district administration, Randy in particular, for many months now. As the task force evolved, our numbers and our samples and our models evolved with that. The presentation this evening is not a proposal, it's not a recommendation, it is simply a sample of a big chunk of money that can be taken to the voters and how you might play it out over the next five, six years. In building this model, we wanted one that was both understandable to the board as well as to the public and can be used as an election device in educating the patrons of the district. Tom's going to introduce the basic assumptions that we use in the spreadsheet and how the spreadsheet was formulated.
Thanks, Marty. Nothing like going to the end of the meeting and showing people spreadsheets. So I'll try and, I'll try and keep it lively if I can. What we're going to show you is...
Don't write us all off about that. Some of us like this kind of stuff.
Oh, good, good. It's good, good to hear. What we're going to show you essentially is what I would call the executive summary of a model that we have built and are maintaining for the district. There is quite a bit that goes on behind the scenes, just like if you kind of picture it, as I say, as summary of a, summary, executive summary of a report, there's a whole lot of detail back here behind it. But what we're going to show you is the executive summary portion. And as has been emphasized this evening, this is, this is a scenario that has been put into the model just to kind of give you a starting place. And this is not the scenario, it's one for you to consider and start to give you some idea. Some basic assumptions that are, that we put into the model at this point. We are assuming a 6% annual growth in the assessed valuation. So you're assessed, we're assuming the assessed valuation goes up 6% each year. That is based on basically your average of the last five years. We feel it's a pretty reasonable assumption. We also assume that your existing debt, you have 13 issues currently, current, 13, current outstanding debt issues totaling about 270 million, we're assuming no change to those. Those debt service payments remain the same. We're assuming that the state capital reimbursement rate is at 6% annually. As I understand, that's a fairly conservative assumption. At the direction of the administration, we've assumed five new debt issues spaced 18 months apart totaling 275 million. Those are in 2007, a $70 million issue, 80 million in 2009, 38 million in 2010, 35 million in 2011, and 52 million in 2012. Each issue, for each issue, we're assuming a 20-year repayment with equal annual payments in each of those years. For the 2007 and 2009 issues, we're assuming an interest rate of 4.5%. And for the remaining issues, we're assuming an interest rate of 5.5%. We're not showing in the model at this point any interest earnings on the, on the construction funds. Obviously, when you've got, when you issue debt and you're doing construction projects, you've got a period of time where the funds are idle. There's the potential there obviously for interest earnings. We have not plugged those in at this point so that what that says is any interest earnings that you did receive obviously would improve the picture, essentially reducing the impact on the mill levy. Similarly, we don't have any adjustments in here for the use of cash balances, for delinquent, delinquent payment of taxes, in other words, overdue taxes, or the, on the contrary, payment of delinquent taxes. Okay. So turning to the spreadsheet, and there's nothing like looking at someone else's spreadsheet. It always makes sense to them and never makes as much sense to the other person. So I'll go through it essentially left to right. Soon as I get my bearings here. Okay. All right. So we're going to start all the way on the left and essentially what you've got is the, is the fiscal year. And then we've got, as I alluded to earlier, the 6% projection for annual growth and assessed valuation. We've got the 7.2, which is your actual, and then a 6% you'll see thereafter. So coming over, the next, next column is the actual, is the actual and projected assessed valuation. So the early numbers, the bold numbers indicate your actuals and then building on the 6% that shows your assessed valuation, starting about 1.8 billion, as Gary alluded to.
As a follow-up to Gary Deener's comment, if you look at the year 2020, projected based on the 6% growth rate, the tax base for your district will be $4 billion compared to 1.8 today.
So then the next column is your actual outstanding debt service. This represents both your principal and interest payments on your existing debt. And you'll see that that, as you saw in the earlier graph, that falls off in 2022. So now we get to the proposed new debt service and you'll see that it builds on itself over time as you, as you, as we alluded to, there are five issues. And so as those get, those issues are sold, you'll see the debt service ramps up and then levels off. So when we get to this yellow portion, what we've done here is we have, we've attempted to show you kind of the impact. And so this is the first, the yellow portion here is the combined impact of your existing debt service as well as the proposed new debt service. And you'll see in this column, we have the, the mill levy requirement of the combination. And then we've shown the impact on a homeowner with a two, with a home valued at assessed, with assessed value of 200,000. You might ask where that number comes from. We did quite a bit of study, Randy and I, and looked at various different sources and probably the best is some sources from the Johnson County Assessor's Office. And what we showed, what that showed was that when we looked at the two ZIP codes, 66061 and 62, 200,000 represented about the average single-family house. Another way we looked at it was we also looked at the city of Alatha, city of Alatha, 200, again, 200,000 was about the average. And that was for the current, the current assessment year. Then the last columns, because we thought you'd be interested in seeing it this way as well, we've shown you, and it says combined mill levy requirement. It's probably, we should probably change that title now that I look at it. This is the mill levy requirement strictly for the new debt service. So you can see that and what portion that makes up. So for example, 2008, the, the new debt service makes up a 1.48 miller requirement of the 16.27 total. And then again, we've showed you the impact on a $200,000 assessed value home. Any questions on the model?
I have a question. This is assuming a 25-year repayment.
20-year.
Well, actually, it'd be 25 years.
Oh, I see.
But the first one's in year one, the last bond issue's in year five.
Yeah.
So the last one's 20 years.
Right.
But the overall is a 25-year program.
Right.
Mr. Deener, what do we currently use or what do we historically use? Has it been 15 years for repayment amortization?
We've looked at a lot of your prior bond issues. In the early 90s, 20 years was pretty much the norm. And as the district tax base started to grow very quickly, you were able to afford to shorten the bond issue. And we've had them at 10 years or less, the last several bond issues. We use 20 because that's the general market standard for school financings. One of the things, well, a few concluding comments. The district does have $270 million outstanding. This model shows 275 being added. By the decision prior boards made, and good decisions, and shortened the debt as much as possible, that gave rise to the capacity that Gary mentioned earlier. In five years, 49% of the existing debt will be paid off. In 10 years, 88% of the existing debt will be paid off. That leaves you that massive amount of capacity that you're building for future activity. Currently, the district enjoys a very strong credit rating with double A from both rating services, which puts you in the upper stratosphere of credit quality issuers. And you have built over the last decade or so, a very strong financial school district. We believe that the district does have the capacity and can comfortably afford a bond issue program that we're presenting tonight. The district would be able to maintain its current rating. We don't think there will be any negative impact on the rating. And the way this is structured, the board would retain the flexibility and control. You control when a certain amount of debt is issued, how much debt is issued, how long it's repaid over, and you make those judgments against both the economy, whether it's booming or if it's got a problem, on the interest rate environment, whether we have a low interest rate environment or a higher one. And you can balance the levy impact by those variables. So you get to make those decisions along the way. So we think, in our opinion, this is an affordable kind of amount of debt that the district can handle without having negative consequences. Be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Neuwij, let me ask you, if you could address the issue of our degree of control over refunding. If we agree with the assumption we'll do everything in 20, over 20-year amortizations, this is something I have to be reeducated on every time we talk about this. So please bear with me. But could you talk about the capacity and our ability to control refunding of some of that to shorten it down the road if economic times or valuations were up?
You can only advance refund one time under federal law, which means you're calling bonds or you're paying, you're refunding bonds in advance of their stated call period. You can refinance any bond issue that is currently callable, meaning you have the right to pay it off. And the way we structured all of your transactions, you have the right to pay it off with no premium. So...
After what period of time?
Typically, it's seven to 10 years, depending on what the market conditions were at the time we brought an issue to market. So it depends on each of your bond issues, when you have the ability to refinance it anytime. And when you refinance it, you can stretch out the debt, you can shorten debt. You can take the savings upfront or you can take it over time. So it's usually around the 10th year of any bond issue that you have that full control.
Mr. Neuwij, can you tell us, I don't know if you'll be able to do it tonight, what one mill equates to amortized over 10 years, 15 years, and 20 years?
We can get you that information.
Okay, thank you. That'd be good to have.
I might make a couple of comments here. What we were hoping to achieve tonight is, you know, give you this example and then get those questions so that we can prepare with staff and Marty's group for a date in December or January to really look at any other scenarios that you want us to look at. So you may be prepared to ask that tonight or if you would like to email those questions to me. And then I'll make sure that those get coordinated with staff, with Randy, and we can help prepare some of the things that the board might desire for us to take a look at, not only in bond amounts, but also in different scenarios that might be here.
And the 275 is just somewhat of an approximation. I think it would be helpful if we saw that in various steps and, you know, start wherever you want, 150, 200, 225, just to see what the various tables would look like in that range.
Any other questions or comments?
Just so I have a good picture of it, one, one news letter that I've subscribed to shows a, because the demographics of the country show a decline or depression in the real estate market, starting in about 2010. I'd like to see that, maybe reduced growth, just see some numbers just to have that ready too. Say maybe a 2% growth or something in the assessed value.
We can. We could also give you a 20-year history, which shows that your average growth is substantially higher than the...
Which is, it's just what, like I said, just the demographics of the country are showing that it, we may not be able to support the continued real estate boom that we're doing.
I would have an interest in knowing if we've refunded all of our other, let me rephrase that question. What opportunities will we have to refund our other bond issues? How many remain that we would have that opportunity to do at some future date of the current bond issues?
That's a complicated question. You usually refinance when you can save money. And if interest, if interest rates stay relatively low like they have, then as soon as we get to, closer to a call date on some of the bond issues, it will make sense to refinance and save money. On the other hand, if interest rates generally trend... On the other hand, if interest rates generally trend up, whether you have the legal ability to refinance it or not, it doesn't make any economic sense to do it unless you're stretching it out or shortening it up to accomplish something other than a savings. So it depends issue by issue. Yeah, we did an evaluation recently on all your outstanding debt to see if there were any refunding possibilities, and there aren't, or there aren't any that save you money.
Based on the market conditions, I think what would be interesting to know is where those potential points would be in the event that the market allowed for, going back to the question Mr. Gilmore asked about, how frequently could we do that or when could we do it, depending if the interest rates were favorable?
We consistently monitor your outstanding debt to see whether some candidate is popping up as a likely possibility.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Mr. Deener, do you have any closing remarks or is that it?
I don't think so, no. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, we're to the end of our agenda, board members, and we'll open the floor. If there's any questions or comments, things you'd like to see in the future regarding as we continue to study these issues, anything that strikes your mind you'd like to let us know about. And I would echo Dr. All's comment to please email her continued questions or issues, things you'd like to see so we can help prepare the agendas going forward. That'd be very helpful.
Ask me again.
Are we doing a summary of all of the, now the parent meetings that have been held?
Yes. The intention right now is we've finished the eight junior high feeder sessions. We've done the district site council last night. And then we have the four high school sessions that will get for our community and particularly those who might not have children in schools who want to come hear those sessions and provide feedback to the board in early November prior to a special meeting. So there will be feedback summary. And if you'll recall, there's been some group input, but that every individual person that's heard the presentation has had an opportunity to fill out an individual sheet. And so those will be accumulated and tallied, and then all those sheets are available for anybody to review. We're keeping them by like groups and dates and whatever. So hopefully that we can have that data for you and give you some feedback on that. I think you're going to see some good questions and some, probably some common, if you've been listening in, some common questions about people would say, I can support this if, and the if is kind of the key word of if we do this, if we have this, if we have that. And I think we'll, that look, you know, will be part of that picture as well. So you should have that feedback.
Just want to take, express a word of thanks to all of you for participating in some of those presentations and in the site council meetings and visiting our schools. I think that's been very helpful to this process. And please continue to, I know it's not a problem, to speak your mind about all this stuff as we're studying because it helps me personally to make better decisions to hear from all of you. So thank you very much for your time tonight. Thank you to the staff and everyone, and we're adjourned.